...two thousand eighteen, first of all.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? There's a vote. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next, we have the meeting minutes of the budget subcommittee meeting of April twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. And the minutes of the joint board of selectmen and school committee executive session meeting of April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is a vote. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Seeing nothing under correspondence, under audience, we have a really feel-good item on our agenda tonight. We have with us some very, very amazing people, some Rockland educators who were recipients of the Plymouth County Education Association annual awards. And Rockland would be proud to know that quite a few of our school district teachers and paraprofessionals, everyone, all down the line, were honored, given well-deserved rewards, and it's just really so great to see our wonderful people being recognized. I asked Dr. Cron to put this on our agenda tonight so that we might have the opportunity as a committee to thank these ladies and gentlemen for what they do here in our district each and every single day, and recognize them for the award that they were just given. Dr. Cron, would you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I'm just glad anytime our teachers are recognized because I think that most people say there isn't a more important job in the world, but we also fail to pause and say "thank you." So I think it's great that the Teachers' Association takes the time each year to solicit these nominations, and that so many of our teachers participated. I know that all of the folks who we asked, who we are recognizing, weren't able to come, but I think, do we want to invite them up to...
I would, yeah, very much.
Yeah.
I'd like to invite up everybody. First of all, I'd like to read all the names maybe first, and then for the folks that were able to attend with us tonight, we'd like to invite you up, and we've got a letter from our committee that we'd like to thank you and congratulate you on your awards. So for the folks from Rockland that were honored, well, first of all, let me talk a little bit about the awards that were given. There was retirement, a retirement award for at least fifteen years of service and ten years as a county member. There's a distinguished professional service award of at least forty years of service, a professional service award of at least thirty-five years of service, and life membership of at least thirty years of service. Also, we had rookies of the year, teachers with one to three years' experience who have presented particularly innovative ideas and programs in the classroom. An honor award that showed significant service in one of the following areas: profession, association, or community. It can be awarded in every year for new contributions. Citation is an outstanding service in all three areas: profession, association, and community, and can be redonated after a five-year period. And last but not least was the Loretta Quinlan Award nominated that night, to be chosen from the citation nominees of the committee. So from Rockland, we had quite a few wonderful folks that were given awards, and I would just like to read each of their names individually. It is a bit of a long list, but each and every one of them decide deserve to be recognized individually. After I finish reading the list, I'd like to invite those of you, ladies and gentlemen, that are able to be here with us tonight up so that we can personally congratulate you, and thank you. So award winners from Rockland: Lisa Ryan, Susan Lonergan, Molly Ross, Mary Scopoletti-House, Terry Thomas, Tim Wells, Chris Howe, Sherri Gunville, Richard Carpenter, Kathleen Gary, Karen Messier, Sheila Gray, Sharon Pigeon, Janet Barry, Taryn Muello, Susan Wells, Donna Wilbur, Marcia Beatty, Michael Gaiet, Pam Sheridan, Maureen Clark, Kim Windsor, Chantel Kavka, Samantha Forten, Cheryl Trudeau, Kathy Wells, Diane Hayes, Karen Armstrong, Susan Patton, Barry Parker, Joanne Pierce, Patricia Netto, Anne Marie Dunn, Edna Doring, and Paula Brown. Congratulations to each and every single one of you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for your service to Rockland. So for those of these ladies and gentlemen that are here, I'd like to, Dr. Cron would like to invite you up to thank you. We have with us tonight Lisa Ryan, Susan Lonergan, Mary Scopoletti-House, Donna Wilbur, Michael Gaiet, Pam Sheridan, Kim Windsor, Chantel Kavka, and Sue Patton. Thank you all so much. You really make us proud every single day, and even better. You make us feel really good as parents to be able to send our kids off to our schools, knowing that we have such fine professionals and great people teaching them. We have Lisa Ryan.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Susan Lonergan.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. Mary Scopoletti-House.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mary.
Donna Wilbur.
Congratulations, thank you, Donna. Michael Gaiet.
Responsible for all the lovely art.
Thank you, Mr. Gaiet. Congratulations. Ms. Pam Sheridan.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you. Kim Windsor.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. Chantel Kavka.
Congratulations, thank you.
And Ms. Susan Patton.
I'll take one of those, too.
I love you guys.
Love you, too.
Rockland's awesome.
Congratulations.
My favorite teacher ever.
I just gave him an extra day for your homework.
Smell like an extra month.
I love you, too.
I love you, too.
Thank you, and congratulations again to the awards recipients. Next on tonight's agenda, our superintendent's report. Dr. Cron.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank the entire town of Rockland, and especially town meeting members, who voted overwhelmingly to pass the school budget, and continues to show support for the schools, not only in words, but in actions and votes, and we appreciate that very, very much. On behalf of all the administrators and teachers and faculty members in the district, we thank you for your support. It makes a big difference. So again, just thank you very much for passing the budget and for continuing to support us. I would also like to congratulate the Rockland Music Department, who I think made a major step forward this year with the musical. For those who attended, it was two events that nearly filled the auditorium, and it's a big auditorium, and it's been sort of a personal dream of mine to see the place filled since I first came here in two thousand twelve and saw the beautiful facility. And the music department is really on the right track, so thank you very much to Michelle Booth, who directed the musical, and Victoria McCombe, who got dragged into conducting the Pitt Orchestra, and also to John Piazza, our director of music. And we had a good time playing together in the Pitt, and the show was a great success. So I know I just spent a lot of time talking about adults, but the kids were outstanding, which has been a given. So I just, I think it was a great step forward and shows that we're on the right track, and congratulations to them. And then finally, I would like to congratulate my partner in crime here, Ms. Colleen Forlizzi, who has been appointed as our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Professional Development. The announcement was made today. The emails and texts that have come pouring in from Ms. Forlizzi's colleagues around the district, and she's been with us for eighteen years, and I think she's been in the business of making a lot of friends, and that showed up today when the phones were ringing like crazy, saying congratulations. So we are very, very fortunate. And just to point out, Ms. Forlizzi came to us and first was a teacher of mathematics in the middle school, grade seven and eight, then went on to become a math coordinator, where she worked and coached. She worked with teachers throughout the middle school and the elementaries, especially with great success, and was then probably forcefully recruited to become the business manager by Doric Scarpelli and my predecessor, John Rutchless, very wisely, and she's done an outstanding job in that role as well. And after the response that I received, we received this morning telling our principals and senior administration, I think they're very, very pleased with the decision. Normally, they're a part of every decision, but this was one that I didn't feel they could be really included in, so this morning I had sort of the uncomfortable, but ending up being wonderful duty to sit with them and tell them. And then Colleen had to do the same thing with the office staff, who cried. And so it's been a big day, but we should be very, very happy to know that we have such a wonderful human being and talented educator in this position, I know that I am. And I am very, very excited about where the Rockland Public Schools are and where they're going, and this is just one more wonderful step in the right direction, so congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Cron, very much. I'm humbled. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cron. I really do.
I'm looking forward to the challenge.
I'm excited about where Rockland schools are and where they're going, and I think we very much can thank Colleen for where we are and where we're going. As you pointed out, Colleen has worn many hats here in Rockland Public Schools, each of them with, you know, class ease, professionalism. We've been, it's been real pleasure of mine to have worked closely with Colleen in her role as the business manager for the last several years. And I know, Alan, when you brought about the idea of having an Assistant Superintendent in charge of curriculum, it was one that you were really passionate about because of how important it is and how important curriculum and driving a positive curriculum is for the kids of this district, and how important that role is. And who would have known that the gem that we needed for that position was right under our noses, and it's really great that Colleen's going to be here to do that. And while it's sad to lose her in one role that she was so good at, I'm really excited that, to see her in this new role, and I think it's going to be a good thing for Rockland students.
Thank you very much for your support, Chairman Biggins. Appreciate it, and the support of the committee. Thank you.
It's nice when good things happen to good people.
Thank you.
I agree.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, Tom.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cron. Next up, we have reports. We have monthly reports for April. We have an administrator's report from Dr. Harrison, Ms. Bond, and Ms. Smith. We have a guidance report from Ms. Black. We have nurses' report from Mrs. Ryan. And we have pupil personnel services from Dr. Miniglia, looking for four motions.
Four motions, but, sorry. And I just had a question for Dr. Harrison. We had student Alice training. How did that go?
Thanks.
Student Alice training went great. I was really impressed with our kids. We basically began with a PowerPoint presentation on the Tuesday of one week. Officer Schnebel and Kathy Paulding, our assistant principal, did a PowerPoint, very brief. They showed a seven-minute video. We did a survey with, get some feedback from kids in advance of doing the live training with the kids on Thursday. Teachers on Tuesday, after the students had the PowerPoint presentation, got to go through scenarios with students about sizes of twenty students. They debated on what they would do, whether they would evacuate or stay in the classroom, or lock down, barricade, or evacuate, I should say. Thursday, we did two scenarios. One scenario, hopefully, after doing each scenario, each group got to either evacuate or lock down, barricade. I really just thought the kids had an outstanding job. Our staff felt much better as well. All in all, it was a great first step towards getting everybody feeling a lot safer.
Good. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Next up, we have, actually, we don't think we finished that vote. We had a motion and a second. All those in favor to pass the monthly reports for April. Thank you. Next up is our school newsletters for May for your information. As always, we say at every meeting, really very informative, very colorful, well-prepared and well-thought-out. If your children are bringing these home, please make sure you read them. There's a lot of great information in these.
Yeah. Math with munchkins, and, let's see, donuts with dads and muffins with mom.
All good stuff.
It sounds very good.
Lot going on at 7:00 AM in our elementary schools, I can tell you that.
Always a lot going on in our schools. Always, always. Next up, for your information, is building rentals for April. A little bit of a quieter month, but we hope that even despite being the end of the year, our buildings will continue being utilized and used.
So I have a question on that.
Yes, please.
We are still doing a review?
Yes.
On the charges. Do you know when that might be completed?
We have a spreadsheet. We have bus fees, we have daycare fees, we have the athletic fees, a whole spreadsheet of fees, building rental fees.
Okay.
So we have them together. We'll present them to you in the Thursday mailing, and maybe if we can report it out here at the next meeting if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah. We'll talk about that. That's great. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next, under old business, we have a request for approval of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Rogers Middle School Student Handbook, and this is a second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next up, we have some completed fundraisers, some very successful ones.
Big bucks.
Exactly. Unbelievable. One of the better sheets I've seen in a long time.
Nineteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-three cents.
Unbelievable.
Is that the total?
The Esten Pack had three fundraisers, first of which, the Scholastic Book Fair in the fall raised three thousand, eighty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. The Esten Pack also had a Scholastic Book Fair in the spring that raised three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. The Esten Pack also held an ice cream social and silent auction basket raffle that raised four thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars.
That's a lot of work.
Outstanding work.
Lot of ice cream.
Sure is. Sure is. Lot of sweet toothes in Rockland. Rogers Middle School Pack had a Super Eight raffle that raised two thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. The Rogers Middle School Pack also had a free trip raffle that raised five hundred and forty dollars. And the Rogers Middle School Pack also held a candy raffle, also proving my point that Rockland has a sweet tooth.
It goes back to you.
They raised five thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and five cents.
No Chipotle.
Really great work. Outstanding.
Ten thousand dollars is a lot of sweets.
Pretty good.
Don't judge.
No burritos, though. I know. I hate them all the time.
Local dentists are happy.
Thank you, Rockland.
Thank you, Rockland, indeed. Well done. Well done by everybody.
We don't have to vote on that one.
No.
No.
No, no. Under new business, we have a daycare camp update. Dr. Cron.
I'd like to bring up Marissa Baldassari, our after-school daycare director and our camp director. And as you can see in your packet, the summer camp is up and running in a few weeks, and it is filled with lots of fun stuff. Thank you, Marissa.
All right. Good evening. My name's Marissa Baldassari. I'm the Assistant Director at the Rockland Daycare, and I'm in charge of running the before and after-school programs and the summer camp. Over this past year, Janet and I have been working together to improve our programs, and we are very proud of our continued success at the before and after-school programs. We currently have two hundred and five children enrolled and thirteen after-school staff. These programs have proven to be continually successful. Since incorporating the enrichment programs, we have also received tremendous amount of positive feedback from the parents and the staff. This year, we have provided a Spanish club led by Mrs. Perez Cook, who works at Esten, Wicked Grove Science Program, and Lego Engineering, provided by Wicked's Cool for Kids, a tennis club run by TGA Tennis, and kids yoga provided by Inspire Kids Yoga. To finish off the school year, we're going to do a South Shore Taekwondo presentation on anti-bullying, and in June, we're going to do a program with Top Secret Science for the afternoon. Our after-school program has also been able to fund different teachers' enrichment programs of their choice, and therefore, I would like to thank all of the elementary school principals for accommodating our needs over the school year. Also, as of the summer, Christine Allen has accepted the position of the Assistant Camp Director. Christine is currently an after-school teacher at the Jefferson Elementary School and is currently completing her lead teacher certification. Over the past few weeks, Christine and I have been working hard to organize a fun-filled summer, and we will be incorporating a variety of enrichment programs over the summer as well. This year, Colleen and I have worked to create enrichment programs from ten to eleven every morning, including a reading club, technology club, art club, science and sports programs, and yoga classes. This summer, we will also have water play, arts and crafts, organized games, and Friday field trips. We have planned many exciting field trips, and it's always exciting to see the kids enjoy them. And also new this summer, we will be providing coach buses, which we are very excited about using. We currently have fifty-five children enrolled, and based off last summer's enrollments, we're close, we're hoping to have close to a hundred campers enrolled as well. We are looking forward to an exciting summer, and I can't wait for it to arrive. Taking on the position as the Assistant Director has been very rewarding and enjoyable, and I'm truly thankful to work in this town and be able to give back to the children and the community. Thank you very much. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
Thank you. Questions from the committee?
No. Sounds good.
Great work. All good stuff.
Thank you.
Always good stuff, exciting stuff for the kids of Rockland to be able to spend their summer days.
It's fun.
Outstanding.
I enjoy it.
Do other communities do this? Do other communities...
Not run through a daycare like us. We're kind of special in that aspect.
This is really magnificent. Really, truly is.
I do have to say that it's all self-funded because of the great work that Marissa and Janet do, bringing kids in. This is all self-funded through the...
What an opportunity for kids. It's just great.
Right.
Six fifty an hour for the kids.
It's great. I mean, it's great.
That's impressive.
In the summertime, there's lots of kids in there, you know, parents still work, and, you know, there's lots of idle time, and it's great to be able to have some really good enriching stuff available to them, so great stuff. Good work.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks, Marissa.
Next up, we have, under new business, item B, we have a request for approval of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen Rockland High School Student Handbook, and this is the first reading.
So there's not that many changes, is there?
No.
Do we, do you need to get this to a printer, or, no? Okay. A motion to table.
Motion to table. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it. I just know the doctor has put a lot of time in on this as he's, I know he's talked about it at site council meetings that I've been to. I know he's had extensive conversation with his personnel about it, so I would like to hear what he has to say.
Do you want me to talk a little bit about the changes?
Please do.
Sure. Just some of the major changes to highlight. I think the biggest one is the attendance policy. We're moving a shift from, currently, we have Saturday detention, so if you have five tardies or four absences in a specific term, you get Saturday detention. And what we ran into is a problem where a student wouldn't show up for the Saturday detention, and then they get suspended out of school, which is almost counterproductive because it keeps the kid out of school longer. That was something that we felt like we needed to change. We had an attendance committee, which spent a significant amount of time this winter and spring, and we revised the policy after looking at several schools. We looked at the schools in the South Shore League. We also looked at the schools in our DART profile, which is the schools that the Department of Ed compares us most closely to, based on our socioeconomic status, based on our state testing performance. So based on our research, we came up with a credit loss and credit recovery model policy, which is, seems to be what schools have. And the meat of the policy is when a student is absent seven or more days unexcused in a semester, or fourteen or more days unexcused in a full year, the student would lose academic credit. Now, grades earned, they still get the grade they earn, they just don't get the credit attached until they recover it. The goal of any school is to improve the student's behavior. So the big piece of this is a four-step process in which a student can recover that credit. The first is they get a warning. So halfway through, if it's fourteen days unexcused absences, halfway through that, they'd get a letter basically saying, "This is your warning. If you get to fourteen in a year, you will lose credit." Step two would be they actually lose the credit, but then step three, they can buy it back. So we take a day off, let's say they had fourteen, fifteen days of absences. If they have a week of perfect attendance, they get a day back. What we're trying to do is get the student to correct that behavior. The second piece to it is, let's say there's just some students that can't get five days of perfect attendance. They just can't do it for whatever reason. Well, what we'd do is we'd have them meet before a board of administrators and teachers, and we'd come up with a plan, and the key is we want to get the family in. So the family would be present for this meeting, and we'd come up with what we call a credit recovery loss plan. That could mean many things. Maybe the student needs to make up some time learning online, with online courses. Maybe they need to come in for Saturday detention at that point. Maybe they need to, maybe we say to them, "You know what? This fall semester was bad, but if you get three absences your second semester, we're going to give you that credit." So we want to be able to personalize the plan for that specific student. That's really the meat of that policy. The other changes are very much guidance-related, whether it's the change, which we were all supportive of a few months ago with the world languages being two consecutive years in the same language. That's something we've already talked about with the program of studies. We wanted to clarify some language around withdrawals and incompletes, as well as with just courses that are taken outside of Rockland High School. Sometimes those courses aren't of the same caliber as courses in our program of studies, so we wanted to make sure that families get the pre-approval if those courses are going to be accepted, especially with online courses now. We want to make sure that they are accredited and incredible, and that there's just not an assumption that they'll be accepted. We are going to accept virtual high school courses taken at Rockland High School through VHS will be factored into a student's GPA. That's pretty much the only exception to that. That's pretty much the summary of the changes. I'm happy to go into any detail, but that's just a brief overview.
Very good. Any other questions or comments we can make?
No.
Very good. So we have a motion to table?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Thank you very much, Dr. Harrison.
Good job.
Next on tonight's agenda, under new business, item C, Special Education Summer School. Dr. Cron.
We have, I know that sign-ups for Special Education Summer School are way up, which Ms. Miniglia is very excited about, Dr. Miniglia is very excited about. She was just hooded this past weekend, which I've been dying to announce.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, we're very excited for the summer school, and it's going to be held at Rogers Middle School again this year, and we're excited about it.
Outstanding. Great news. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Next up, we have a request for approval of fundraisers.
Do we have to approve this, the money?
Do we need to approve this, Alan? Does this require a vote?
No. I don't believe so.
I think it's already approved.
You think so?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second, sir? All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Thank you. Okay, very good. Next up, we have a request for approval of fundraisers. Rockland High School has three fundraisers that they are looking to do. We have the boys' lacrosse team that is looking to do an LCR tournament. The class of two thousand twenty-one is holding a sunglasses sale. The class of two thousand nineteen is doing a Domino's Dough Razor. The preschool pack is doing two fundraisers, a cookie dough fundraiser in September and a raffle calendar in February. So we're looking for approval of these five fundraisers. We have five motions. We have, we have five seconds.
Five seconds.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Time's five.
Next, under new business, under right of E, we have surplus property. Dr. Cron, is there anything notable within the surplus property that you're commenting on?
No, just, again, at such a space, it's such a premium, and that has become more and more apparent as our new materials are arriving, new textbooks for the literacy program, the science materials for the science program. So the schools are bursting, and I think this prompted MP to do some cleaning of the closet and surplus all of these things.
Now, the surplus is available for anybody to want?
Absolutely.
For how long?
My daughter came home with a dictionary and thought she was the coolest thing in the world, so.
Yeah. I'll have to look if there's a, I don't know that there's a mandated period.
Two weeks.
So two weeks. We'll keep it available to the public for two weeks.
Yeah, motion to approve.
I'm second.
All those in favor?
And then you recycle the rest.
We recycle the rest, correct.
And is this somewhere that the public knows that it's out there?
It's at Memorial Park. The materials are at Memorial Park. I suppose we could tweet and Facebook if we haven't already.
Okay.
Very good.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, and actually, a quick preface before these next two, these two, next two agenda items. Past year or so, the school committee, his committee, and the board of selectmen have worked very, very well together. I think it's always good for any organization, any business, any team to kind of look under the hood and see how you're doing, and see how you're working together, and see how you're communicating, and how you can be better. And I'm proud to say that this committee, as well as each individual member of the board of selectmen, really has worked hard on that this past year to try to make both of our procedures as sound and as effective as possible. On April thirtieth, we had a, an executive session between our two boards, a joint executive session, in which we came up with some directives that are both of our committees and some goals that we want to achieve, and part of those goals was one of our next two agenda items, and ladies and gentlemen, I might suggest that we just change the order of them. I think the first order we should, we should motion to pass is the request for approval of the policy of the procedure products of the meeting minutes of April 30th, which we previously voted through, before we vote the appointment of a school committee liaison to the Board of Selectmen, just because that is part of the procedures that we voted on in that meeting, so I would think it would be appropriate first to vote on the request of approval of the policy and procedures of that executive session of April 30th.
Motion, we do that?
All those in favor, that is a vote, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Also, as I mentioned, part of the decisions that we made in that meeting was that we would be appointing a school committee liaison to the Board of Selectmen, so we would like to bring that up as an agenda item tonight.
I would like to nominate Joe Maron.
Second.
All those in favor? That is a vote, thank you very much.
Anger work.
Thank you.
Last but not least, on tonight's agenda, we have public service announcements, and as always, ladies first, we'd like to recognize Macy Jones. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have the Design Selection Committee, you know what, I got the, I don't have the updated agenda here, so we have the appoint, we have a last added agenda item, to appoint Design Selection Committee member, and Dr. Cron, I think you have some comments about that?
Yeah, so there's, we have three members of the building committee who are part of the process of choosing the architect, but this is largely a phase of the process that's in the hands of the MSBA, they really make a lot of the decisions. Our owner's project manager will work hand-in-hand with a group of three people, they ask that the superintendent is on, is one of those three people, they ask that the school committee appoint a member, and they ask that the Board of Selectmen appoint a member, so, or not the Board of Selectmen, that the town manager appoint a member, I believe he has appointed Rich Penny, who is the chair of our...
Ed Kimble.
Oh, he was appointed Ed Kimble, and so now the school committee needs to nominate a member as well.
I'd like to nominate Mark Shaw.
I'd like to second that nomination. Any other comments or questions or suggestions? All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote, thank you very much. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
What's that?
That's who you wanted, right?
Mark?
Yeah, yeah, I like Mark, yeah, Mark's a super guy.
Super blessed to have Mark in that role.
Right.
A big baby, Mark, yeah, I'll tell ya, never forget it.
So, now, last but not least, again, public service announcements, Macy Jones, do you have any questions or comments or announcements for us tonight?
Steel and Mr. Phelps's son are usually both sports, but girls' tennis has made the state tournament for the first time in several years, so, we're excited about that, that starts June 3rd, I think.
You guys are what, five or six and one?
We're eight and two right now.
Eight and two, yeah, unbelievable, unbelievable, I don't ever remember that, I've been around a while, I never remember the girls doing that well.
She's on the team.
I know she is, I know she is, she rushed out of something meeting we were at to get over.
But that was swimming, wasn't it?
No, no.
And then, I'm not sure, but I think this is my last meeting, and so I just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to be a part of this, and I've learned a lot, so thank you.
Well, thank you, you know, you've been helpful to us in a lot of ways, and I hope that this experience has been educational for you, and you've learned a little bit about what a school committee does, and...
Definitely.
That's great, well, thank you for all you've done, it's been great to get to know you too.
Do you know anybody in the junior classes coming up that you might, yeah?
I don't know, but a few of the teachers have come up to me and said that some students have been asking them about the position, so, I don't know any names yet, but I do know that there are some people interested.
And you're going to do what next year, Macy, tell us?
I'm going to go to UMass Boston to study political science.
Congratulations.
Political science.
Ooh, there's a couple good, there's a couple good teachers over there.
Great, anything else for us?
Uh, no, that's about all I got.
Great, thanks so much, Macy.
But if you want to come on the 29th, I know you have, that's the next meeting, right, the 29th?
Correct.
That's Tuesday.
Right after Memorial Park.
Right.
Yeah, so, but if you want to come, I know you have another appointment, but if you're really, you're more than welcome to show up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Maron.
She does. I wanted to say first that now I've been here for a month, two meetings down, and I appreciate that I'm here and that I was elected and that you all voted and trusted me. I also thank the boys and the ladies for answering all my questions and leading me in the right way, so I appreciate that. In my month so far, I've been to the Rockland Education Foundation breakfast, or I think it was a reception, actually, and that was very interesting to hear who got the grants, and I thought that was very exciting, I think that's the difference between being on that side of the table, and this side is actually getting to be more involved and see what's actually happening. I've also got to attend the Wizard of Oz with my family, and I got to see Dr. Cron in the pit.
Where he belongs.
Where he belongs, but really, the students, it was absolutely amazing, we laughed, and it was just so fun, watching my daughter and her friends' faces was exciting as well, to see them, excited to think that that could be them someday too.
The noises that were coming from the audience were awesome.
It was so funny, they were just...
The children's gasps and laughing, and it was wonderful.
Right, we were nervous for the monkey, but there was only one, so it wasn't so...
The witch.
Right, and the witch, but it was awesome, it was an awesome show, and I got to go to the grand march on Friday night as well, and get to see the beautiful and handsome senior class and some juniors, I'm assuming, and also appreciate that my daughter and son are nine and 12, and not there yet, so it's been a fun month, and I'm happy to be here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Just that, you know, here it is, you know, so it's May, the middle of May, and the school year is almost over, and the seniors are going to be graduating, making their plans, and, but the undergrads need to get their work done, yeah, and get it done, so just work hard at it, get it done, so you won't have to be in summer school, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
No, just as, as Tom says, it's that time of year, just be careful, make good decisions. I still remember in ancient history, when I graduated, one of my classmates was killed the night before graduation, tragic automobile accident, not his fault, but it happened, so just be careful, be safe, I'll chime in on the music department and the program and the Wizard of Oz, the, the music was professional, I have to tell you, and I don't like telling you that, but I'll tell you, it was professional, I, you'd think you were sitting in the, the Wang Center or something, it was really great, and the kids, the, the way that they were cast, they were perfect for the parts that they played, it was, and to watch them enjoy what they were doing so much, it's the best production I've seen put on here, I go back a while, as I said, it's the best production I've seen in every way, and thanks to our music director for exciting kids, and from what I understand, I just got an invitation to go to something at the middle school, which I'm excited about, because from what I understand, there's quite a group of kids coming over that is going to increase the size of our orchestra and our marching band, which is, I think it's great, because not only is it great for the kids, it's great PR for us, our school department, to have those kids out there representing us and doing such a great job, as they do with athletics, as they do with other things, but just to see the music program going the way it is, I'm, I'm a cheerleader there, I think it's great.
You've been a huge supporter, it means a lot to them, they've said so on multiple occasions, so thank you.
It's just exciting to see it happen, you've got the right people in the right places, with the exception of the people in the pit.
No, they belong there.
These are really stabbing, you see.
Thank you very much, Mr. Phelps, Mr. Garofalo.
I'm just jealous they have a pit, because I was in the building, and the auditorium did not look anything like it does now. All right, so, yeah, we've, we've gone over it, graduation, prom already happened, it's, it's that time of year, as long as everybody's safe and has fun, that's, that's all we care about, but what I do want to congratulate is, this past weekend, there was 14 girls from Rockland that competed in a figure skating competition down in Plymouth, the ISI Spring Sparkle Figure Skating Competition, and as I've pointed out numerous times, these girls will never get any credit through the MIAA for all the athletics that they do do, and I can tell you, when my five-year-old's bringing home three first-place medals and a fourth-place medal, she's doing more than some of the MIAA people get recognized for, so, I'd like to congratulate Riley Boylan, Riley Atkinson, Isabel and Charlotte Garofalo, Kaylee Chavez, Summer Woodward, Kelly Herzog, Madison Dever, Claire Carpeany, Sophia Morse, Madison and Gabriella Roach, Ava Powers, and Megan Joyce, and I'd also like to say